Good evening, everyone. Welcome back from February vacation. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 24th, 2020 Hingham School Committee meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Just a quick note for folks, so you don't think anything is like an emergency, but I have to leave tonight around 9:15, 9:30. I have to head out of town for a work event, so I may have to leave a little early. And if I do, Carlos and Carrie will take over. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please note this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If there's anyone else who intends to audio or video the meeting, could you let me know? All right, seeing none. Move over to approval of minutes. We have a few sets of minutes to approve tonight. Want to make a motion, Carlos?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget work session held on January 20, 2020.
Second? Sorry, Libby? Thank you. Any questions, comments, questions?
Yes, that was Ness's second.
Oh, Ness, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes. In the paragraph titled "Review Fiscal '21 Budget Proposals for Function," Section 2, in the one, two, three, four, five, sixth line down, sentence that reads, "John Ferris noted that the current year increase over budget for vocational schools was for students who entered those schools after last year's budget was voted. I believe that it was for special education out of district schools, not vocational schools." So that needs to be corrected. That's the only thing.
Okay. Thank you for correcting that. Any others? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Would that change? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting, joined with the advisory committee, education subcommittee, held on January 26th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Ness, thanks. Questions, comments, edits? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget meeting held on February 3rd, 2020.
Ness, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is questions and comments from the audience. The school committee encourages community engagement, and we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed. In addition, we have a few minutes set aside before the meeting starts about anything not on tonight's agenda. Anyone here for anything not on the agenda? Okay. And then we will move on to agenda item number four, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Thank you. In your packets, albeit at the very last moment, so it is the Monday after vacation week, so I didn't get quite as quickly as I would have liked that to you. I have given all of you in your packet a draft copy of my mid-year summary. To be clear on this, this was our first attempt. It is a draft, since I wasn't exactly sure what format would be best for you to see. So what I did, just to kind of walk you through, what I did is, these are the indicators that were approved by the school committee that you'll be doing the evaluation at the end of the year, and was my attempt to give you a brief summary in each area, so that if there's any questions or whatever, I don't expect that. You can certainly ask me tonight, that's fine, but you can certainly talk to me anytime, email the questions, or we can certainly, if you'd like to chair, if you want to do that another night as well, we can, for a discussion, it's fine, we can do that in public, it doesn't matter. But if you don't mind, I'd like to run through these quickly.
Sure.
So in the first area is student leadership, instructional leadership under standard one, which is ensuring that instructional practice in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work, engaging all students, and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. Under that, we have student engagement. And what I did on the format, I gave you both the proficient and the exemplary expectations. So I'll just read to you the proficient expectations, and it's while observing principal practice and artifacts regularly provides feedback to ensure that principals are identifying and promoting a variety of effective, high-leverage instructional practices that are likely to motivate and engage most students. My summary of that, just the brief summary, since the beginning of the school year, I have visited each school and formally met with each principal on a monthly basis. A sample agenda is attached to your report. During our monthly meetings, we discuss how we, educationally meeting the needs of all students. We conduct building walkthroughs and classroom observations in numerous classroom settings that span both subject and grade levels. Following observation, we discuss the observation process and how best to provide meaningful feedback, leading to improved instructional practices. For the remainder of the, for this school year, I will continue to meet regularly with each administrator and continue classroom observation and feedback sessions. My goal is to achieve the exemplary expectations, wherein collaboration with building principals, we are focused on high-leverage instructional practices that motivate and engage each and every student in Hingham Public Schools. So that's the format that I kind of, and so what I'm looking for feedback, if you would be, when you have time to read this later, things that you'd like to see in there to help you at the end of the year, additional evidence, et cetera, that you, would be helpful to you in the process. The second indicator is the evaluation. Yeah, okay.
Additional evidence. My daughter was in a class at the high school when Paul and the principal, and both the assistant principals came in to observe the teacher, and she told me, she says, as soon as she got home, she's like, wow, that was quite the observ, what were they doing? I'm like, they were just observing, I'm sure, so. So it does happen. It's going to test it.
Just a quick note on that. We've observed dozens upon dozens of classrooms, and we find that the most, it's the best use of our time when we're really looking at instructional practices are consistent, and we can see, you know, what goes on in a classroom. So it's, yes, it's important to be visible, but the use of that time is really focused on, how do you give good feedback? What are we looking for? How do we identify really good instructional practices? And how do we give feedback to teachers to really improve instructional, instructional practice across the district? So that's been the focus of our work. It's been really enlightening to me to be able to get into classrooms and see our teachers in action, and they're phenomenal. But it's also really good for our principals, who do get that feedback about, how do we really work through then? What kind of meaningful feedback would we give that is really something that the teachers can take and learn from and grow? So it's a great process. And the second indicator is the evaluation indicator. This is providing effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regs and contract provisions. So the proficient expectation is that we support administrators and administrative teams to develop and attain meaningful, actionable, and measurable professional practice, student learning, and where appropriate, district or school improvement goals. We review goals for quality and support progress in that area. So for me, as I mentioned previously, I meet regularly with building principals each month. In addition to our classroom observations, we discuss progress towards meeting individual and school improvement goals, and we discuss other instructional concerns where feedback is requested to improve instructional leadership at the building level. Every Monday, we hold a central office cabinet meetings with central office administrators to promote teamwork and to ensure adequate communication, support, and focus on district leadership initiatives and issues. In addition to building level and cabinet meetings, we hold administrative council meetings each month with building principals and central office administrators in an effort to promote teamwork, high standards and consistency in educational programming, and discussion of educationally relevant topics that promote individual and team growth. We hold leadership meetings each month for central office administrators, principals, assistant principals, directors, and resource teachers. The focus of our monthly meetings has been primarily on professional development, addressing topics such as educational practice, programmatic equity and high standards, and understanding implicit bias. A focus in the second half of the school year is to review our goals for measurable progress with each of the principals. Go to standard two, under management and operations, that is promoting the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. So we have an indicator D, which is law, ethics, and policy indicators, which is understanding compliance with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. And the two areas we're looking at are laws and policies, and then ethical behavior. The proficiency expectations is that we understand and comply with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, and collective bargaining agreements. We provide the resources and supports to ensure district-wide compliance for proficiency. From my mid-year progress, beginning on July 1, and actually several months before that time, I have studied Massachusetts general laws pertaining to education, engaged in appropriate professional development opportunities regarding Massachusetts school law, and I've read and become familiar with various contracts to the bargaining units in Hingham Public Schools. As the year has progressed, I've utilized my knowledge of both law and contractual agreements to provide support and guidance to district administrators when issues have arisen. Through a continuous review and discussion of law and contracts with administrators, I have modeled appropriate practice and provided a framework of support that ensures district-wide compliance. In addition, I have worked with the school committee to update district policy, and to that end, the district is currently working with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to undertake a substantial review and revision of all district policy. This will ensure that the district has the most current and up-to-date policies and resources that will serve as the foundation for the laws, policies, and ethical behavior of all Hingham Public Schools well into the future. Standard three, family and community engagement, that is promoting the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders to support the mission of the school and district. This is under family concerns indicator, it was addressing family concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. So in order to reach proficient, it would ensure that all family concerns are addressed in a timely and effective manner throughout the district, and supports administrators to seek equitable resolutions to both academic and non-academic concerns that, A, reflect relevant information for all parties, including families, faculty, and staff, and B, are in the best interest of students. In my progress there, since July, I have worked with administrators to ensure appropriate and timely communications with all families. I have clearly articulated that all concerns are to be addressed at the appropriate level and in a timely manner. I believe this is a matter of trust, with respect for all, and maintaining a focus on what is in the best interest of students at the forefront of all dealings with family and the community. My expectations for administrators are to work collaboratively with families to solve conflict in a fair and consistent manner. Unfortunately, it's sometimes been necessary to provide additional support to administrators who are not able to resolve conflict at the building level. To this end, I've held meetings with the administrator and the parent to bring resolution that is in the best interest of the students. At times, parents have not gone to the administrator before bringing issue to me as the superintendent. As those have occurred, I have worked hard to encourage resolution of issues at the building level. When that has been, excuse me, I've got to turn the page, unsuccessful, I have involved the administrator in the process to ensure that he or she has played a part in the resolution. So this is something we've continued to work on in allowing and empowering the administrators to resolve conflict with families, and that, but there are times when people don't follow those, and they come directly to me. At that time, I do try to redirect, and if that's not possible, we involve the administrator, we bring them in together, and hopefully we are able to resolve it as a group. And we often, often do, and that's an important part of what we do. Professional culture is the next area, which is promoting success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. I have several indicators here, actually, no, this is only one, I'm sorry. Commitment to high standards indicator, which is fostering a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning with high expectations for achievement for all, which includes the mission and core values, develops, promotes, and secures staff commitment to core values that guide the development of a succinct, results-oriented mission statement and ongoing decision-making. Meetings, we plan and lead well-run and engaging meetings that have clear purpose, focus on matters of consequence, and engage participants in a thoughtful and productive series of conversations and deliberations about important school matters. To reach proficiency, it foster, we foster and model a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning among all administrators with high expectations for achievement for all students. In my narrative, I indicate the mission and core values of the district are at the forefront of my communication with administrators, faculty, staff, students, parents, and the community. The commitment to high standards in teaching and learning is discussed with each administrator every month in one-on-one meetings and in administrative and leadership team meetings. As we have gone through the budget process, every presentation has included the mission and core values of the district, which has been clearly articulated as the driving force for what the district does and plans for the future. I've been highly committed to high standards and ensuring that every child receives the supports and services necessary to find success in Hingham Public Schools. Ensuring equity for every child is a top priority for me and the administrative team. And I think you've seen that through the budget process, that we can need to build a budget around making sure that that goal is met. The communication indicator is next, the communication skills, and that is, in order to utilize strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills to consistently and effectively communicate with stakeholders. Since my arrival last summer, I have continually worked to model strong interpersonal skills that address the many stakeholder groups in the Hingham community. I have worked hard to communicate effectively through verbal and written communication skills, and I believe that I have shown an ability to convey a strong message about the district work, the mission and vision, and the goals of the school committee, administrators, faculty, and staff to all stakeholders. In an effort to ensure student voice, I have created a student, superintendent student leadership council that meets on a monthly basis. The district is now on the verge of building a new web presence, and with the support of central office staff, have created a new and improved student, superintendent's newsletter that highlights the work of our students and staff. These efforts, along with our regularly scheduled coffee with the superintendent, attendance at community events, and general visibility in the community, has provided a strong foundation of communication with parents and the community. Managing conflict indicator, and this is response to disagreement and conflict resolution, which is employing strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout a district-school community. And for proficiency, it expects me to respond respectfully and appropriately to disagreement and dissent, using both as opportunities for learning and employing a variety of strategies to resolve conflicts in a constructive manner, modeling this practice for the administrative team as well. As the new superintendent of Hingham Public Schools, I made a solid commitment to treating all individuals with respect and managing conflict with integrity. I believe that conflict is inevitable, but how I manage conflict is my choice. In every situation, I work hard to manage conflict in the most respectful way possible, ensuring that all individuals feel heard and respected. In the end, we can all agree to disagree, but I insist that we do so with civility and dignity. I believe that when I've been faced with difficult situations in my new position, I have modeled appropriate conflict management that keeps students as our primary focus. There have been many conflicts, and I've done my best to bring about resolution in the most effective manner possible. As superintendent, I've worked to support administrators in conflict resolution that is both respectful and student-focused, and obviously empowering them to continue that process. Finally, in my summary statement, I want to take the opportunity to thank the Hingham School Committee for their support and guidance in my first six months on the job. This is an exciting and fast-paced position that I enjoy very much. I have learned so much over the course of the past few months, and I look forward to advancing my skills in the years to come. I recognize that I have much to learn, and I'm also very proud of the progress I have made to date. There's always room for improvement, and I look forward to working collaboratively with the school committee, our administrators, faculty, staff, students, parents, and community to continue to grow as a leader of the district. We have a terrific administrative team, and I'm very proud of their work and commitment to high standards for all. The future of Hingham Public Schools is very bright, and I'm grateful to be part of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Dr. Austin's mid-year, hard to believe, report?
I know. I don't know how that happened so quickly.
I know. I like the choice of words, a fast-paced environment here in the.
Yeah. To say the least.
Anyone have, all right, great.
And I welcome, if you have questions, please feel free to contact me and certainly do that anytime.
I like that you put it in the format of the evaluation form that we have to work off of, because it keeps everything in the same order and organized in that way, so that's very helpful.
So that works, then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, communications. Communications received by the superintendent.
Yeah, I'll mention one. We did have a community member, this is something that, obviously, the last six months has kind of come up once in a while, and that's the use of plastics in our food services program. It is a concern we continue to discuss. We've looked into, I've looked into the potential of PTOs helping us either purchase and sell plastic or reusable containers. That hasn't gone over very well so far, and part of that is because I think they've owned some, and they haven't sold them, from what I understood. They didn't sell well in the past. And so what I'm understanding the problem, just so we're clear about the plastic containers reusables, is that kids have plenty of them. It's not about getting more, it's about what do you do when they don't bring them with them? And so that's a continuous issue, and I did talk about this with the chair tonight, and I think eventually we have to decide, do we want to continue selling bottles of water or not, as far as the plastic water is concerned? What the ramifications of that are, and consider that at some point, if that's really what we want to get rid of. And then what that would do then is, obviously, we do have milk for sale during the day for students at lunch, that are, or students can bring in their water bottles from home, or they can take advantage of a water fountain, and we can provide paper cups, et cetera. So that is something that I will discuss with Mr. Ferris and with Kim Smythe to see what that looks like, and to see, you know, what the fallout with that would be, not fallout necessarily, but what the ramifications of making that kind of change would be. And so I'll bring that back at the next meeting. I would also say that, and Kim and I talked about, the food services director and I talked today, there are multiple, and somebody, when they emailed, they referenced, they had seen a picture of our food service, there were lots of plastic, single-use containers. For the most part, we try very hard to serve on paper plates, just so we're all clear, and there are times when that's just not possible. She gave an example of, if you're doing nachos and salsa, salsa does not do well in a paper bowl. And so that's very hard, and there are students that don't like to eat out of that as well. And so we really do struggle, so we've made some really good attempts at trying to reduce the plastics. We will continue that process. We, you know, and so we're very aware of those issues, and we'll continue to look into other alternatives as those come up. So I wanted to be clear about that. We do our very best to serve paper, so we have paper bowls, paper plates, et cetera. There are just some things that don't go well in paper, and you can imagine, the more liquid it has, the less it would do well in that. So it will be something that, we did get the communication, we will continue to work towards that end, and hopefully bring, if there's anything we can do, to bring that back to you for consideration.
Michelle?
Yes.
I got a phone call over the last week, too, from, on this same issue, from a member of the Cleaner Greener Hingham Committee, who was challenging the school committee about, you know, the selling of plastic bottles. And I explained to her, it's been a while since we had talked about it, so, you know, I'm like, it's not in front of me of what all the sales are and everything, but I said, we were not prohibiting, you know, we, there was, she was challenging me that no one was sharing the revenue information. And I said, no, 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 wait a minute, that's not the issue. We supported the fact of having reusable water bottles and making it available that kids would not purchase the water bottles. It then focused on, she focused more on the elementary school level, and so I said to her, it's like, okay, but it's really then communicating to the parents of, you know, send your kid in with a reusable water bottle, or, you know, don't encourage parents to give their kids money to buy the water bottles. And I told her, I said, that's something you guys could do. It's, you know, we have a lot on our plate, you know, we're doing everything we can, but to really make an effort, your committee could encourage the citizens of Hingham to not encourage the, you know, purchasing of water bottles. And I did say to her, I said, you know, we sell a lot of different beverages at the high school level, but at the elementary school level, there's the challenge of, if you have a paper cup with even water, they could spill it. You know, you got a six-year-old walking across the cafeteria, and then you're in safety issue. So there's a lot of components to it, and so she calmed down a bit, and, but I really encouraged, you know, that Cleaner Greener Hingham Committee, if they can take this on in the community, we'll work with them. You know, we're not saying no, but there are some practical aspects to it, and we even got into, well, you can make milk available, and we talked about when we were kids, you know, you could buy orange juice, too. Well, you can't, nobody wants their kid drinking juice these days. So, so then she was like, okay, I, you know, I get that part of it. So, you know, I said, we have to provide some kind of beverage. So it is out there again, of people bringing it up, because, you know, we got copied on some emails, but then this was another person who was involved, so they're pushing it. But I explained, like, we'll support it, but.
And I want to be clear, I know there's some narrative out there that, you know, we've been resistant to change for revenue issues. Okay, the school lunch program, we have to have some viability, but that's true, but we're not adverse to making those changes.
Yes.
I think that what I would recommend to the school committee, and what we're going to have to think about long and hard, is if we say we're not going to sell these anymore, what's the alternatives? And is that what parents really want? And I would encourage, and we have encouraged students on a regular basis, bring in your reusable bottles. And I think that's the continued message. So when you don't do those, that we do have something available if you don't bring that to school. Well, I did hear, and I've heard the narrative sometimes on the other side of the argument is that kids don't want to carry their water bottles around. They're not interested in bringing their water bottles to school. I've heard that, too. So it is convenient to buy hot water. And so we have to, we have to weigh that really carefully, but I don't have any issues with, we can, at another month, if you'd like, we can certainly bring a report back of how many we actually sell, and what that trend has been over the years, you know, but that would be helpful to the school committee.
Yeah, I think that would be, go ahead.
I think that would be very helpful. And I was on the communication as well. One thing that's interesting is the students really seem engaged in this and interested in this issue. You said nationally, worldwide, too, that they're kind of leading this, because they're feeling it's going to impact them more than any of us. So originally, we talked about working with some of the green teams, because I think every building has them, at least, I'm not sure about the middle school, but all of the other ones do. Has this, have we done anything with that? Did you bring that to the PTOs?
I didn't, we didn't get that far that, to discuss that, but I can certainly, we can bring in.
We did that with the principals, though.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Last, when it came up with the kids from, is it?
Yeah.
I think it was all of them, yeah.
Yeah, they came, that's right, it was a particular grade that came and presented on plastic straws.
Yeah.
And so we did, at the time, discuss it with the principals, probably going to bring it back and make it building-based initiative. I think the thought that the committee, or that we somehow enacted a policy that prohibits the sale of something that's completely legitimate is where we're pausing to give thought.
Yeah.
Like, the building shouldn't be allowed to run and manage their own recycling, our high school is a national green ribbon school for their recycling efforts, and all of our schools. Remember, the idea was to have the student-led green team from the high school really form mentoring relationships with the younger students, and so that is, from my understanding, in progress. It may not be moving to the, with the speed at which other people have an expectation around, or maybe we need to be thoughtful of how we communicate, right, the work that we are doing to curb the issue of single-use plastic in our schools. But again, the, in terms of sort of the bigger scheme of where our focus goes at administrative team, it's on teaching and learning and increasing academic achievement.
Yeah.
So to that point, like, we also have to be thoughtful of what we do take on relative to a relatively small team, sort of working with the resources we have. We were trying to make it a student initiative, that sort of came from, to your point, Carrie, like, that's who has the biggest.
Right.
Who can then go back to their families and say, can I just get an extra bottle, right, as opposed to having us sort of set a rule that prohibits those kids that maybe don't have access to certain things, or, there's lots of reasons why.
Right, right.
It might be that we need to have water bottles on hand, just in case, right?
Right. I do, yeah, ideally, it does come from the students, too.
Yeah.
Maybe there's an opportunity to work with the Cleaner Greener.
Yeah, that's, yeah, have them work with the student groups.
The community, that's, or to work with the community.
Yeah.
Because we have the children, right? We don't necessarily have the adults, right? So that's a fair.
And I do think that the happy medium there is not.
And I do think that the happy medium there is not to stop one thing or the other.
Yeah.
I think to have things on hand and continue to educate the community about bringing water bottles, bringing your reusables, to encourage that on a regular basis, and I think that is something we can take back and do automatically, and we can talk about that with our next administrative team, to remind them to go back and remind the teachers, this is what we're trying to accomplish. Because I don't think the answer is just taking everything out. I think the answer is, we want to have things available, but we want to encourage students to take advantage of other resources. And we do have a lot of students who care deeply about the environment and work really hard. I mean, I can think about going to the high school, I think, in the, I don't know, early fall or something like that, and seeing some of the bikes they've made out of resources, I mean, just, what, students are very, very engaged in these things. And the high school students, in fairness, are bringing some of these questions forward. Why are we doing this? So, it is a great opportunity for us to continue to grow through the message of education, and I think that's the right answer. Well, I can bring some information to you, too.
That would be great.
So we just finally hired a new water company, and one of the things that Aquarion would do during Fourth of July is give out water bottles to advertise their company. So what if the new company, because they have to promote themselves, right, could, you know, donate 5,000, you know, bottles? The only thing is, they're still plastic, right, it's reusable, but, you know...
But they're not single-use plastic?
It's not single, yeah, so that's an idea. And the other thing, too, is the local banks are always looking for ways of promoting the entities. Maybe we can get them to donate 5,000 to our schools.
See, my question is, and I, because I don't see it as a necessary, they don't have the reusable bottles, it's about bringing them to school every day. And, because I've also heard that, that's something they don't, they don't think about putting in a backpack, they don't want to carry it around with them, I get that, and I don't think that's, I don't want to generalize everybody's like that, because I have a lot of students who do. I think we have to continue to encourage and promote that, because I don't see it as necessarily they don't have the reusable item.
Could you have some on the school that it is maintained by the schools and is available?
I don't think we have any of them that are in the schools, do we, right now? Water bottles, we have them.
I mean, the PTOs, some of them.
Reusable.
Yeah, like, I have these bottles, and self-bottles.
No, but have them...
Yeah, but then the kids forget them every day, and like, if you're giving, if you're giving, if you're giving out another, a new plastic bottle, reusable or not, every day, you're still generating stuff.
Not to belabor this, but the point that this woman was telling me is specifically in the elementary schools, which is where she has been involved, there were kids that bought the single-use bottle and didn't even drink the water, or only drank part of it, and then threw it in the garbage.
Yeah.
And so, that, it's this perceived real waste.
Right.
So, however that gets dealt with, you know, in the high school, you have slas the trash, and I think in the middle school, there's other, you know, the kids are just older, they know better.
Right.
So then, how do you deal with it in the elementary schools? And I said, well, yeah, all right, we can talk about that, you know?
We don't have to buy water.
Yeah, right, so...
And we don't make it cheap, so that, hey, we'll just buy a water, you know?
So, but that's where I got back to, well, if the parents don't give the kids the money, and they don't tell them to buy the water, then they won't buy the water, and, you know. So, I think it is an education for families type of issue, so, and that we weren't measuring that, we didn't have a goal of selling a certain number of water bottles...
And we're not trying to promote water sales.
In order to make money, too, which I, was really kind of pushing on me, and I was like, no, 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 that's not the factor, so, anyway.
If that dried up, it would be great. If it dried up, it'd be great.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
We're okay with that.
I mean, certainly, you know, there's a profit element to it, but if it dried up, it doesn't matter. It's going to be, something else will take its place, because what they need is something to drink.
Right, that's, yeah, which I explained to her, too, so...
All right, Libby?
Okay, so I have three things. First of all, quite simply, is, what about bubblers? Like, don't people, like, drink out of a watering fountain anymore?
We have hydration stations now, there's hydration stations.
And they can push the little button and sip from a...
This is lunchtime.
I think they need to put it in the bottles.
We're just talking about lunch.
Yeah.
I don't even remember what we did in elementary school. I mean, I guess I brought my lunch every day and had a thermos in my lunchbox. Oh, okay, so, in all my years of subbing, in and out of all of the different elementary schools, the only one that had any kind of a real educational program to it at the time was Foster, and they very carefully had, like, the fifth graders up there monitoring where the kids put their trash, kind of what the high, what the athletic teams do at the high school. There wasn't any, there wasn't competition or anything, but they would have volunteers, I don't know how they picked them. And that was a good way to get kids in the habit of putting their trash in the right place, and recyclables and whatnot, but I only saw it happening at Foster, and I don't know why it didn't happen to the others, and it could happen at the other elementary schools. And I know that the paraeducators that are there at lunch have a lot on their plate already, just monitoring what's going on, but they could be tasked with something like that, with educating the students more so. They could be more involved in where everything goes, because I didn't see a whole lot of that when I was there. And then, thirdly, how about triple the price of water? That'll get the parents' attention, and that'll tell them, don't buy the water. I mean, I, I mean, it just, like, we're not doing it to make a profit here, people. We're trying to do it to discourage you from buying it.
Yeah.
It's not cheap, you make a good point, it's not cheap, and if they're going to raise anything, you know, raise the water.
We can make it more expensive.
Because I don't want them to buy it.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, I think we need a thoughtful, I mean, I just want to be careful we don't get too far afield.
Oh, yeah.
And I think to that point, I think to all of that, we will go back, we'll continue, if it's going to be our objective to say, we really want to continue, I want to see the, I want to see the data first and see, what does that trend look like? Are we selling fewer? And then we should have a goal of reducing that over time, and then have strategies that are measurable, and I can commit to doing that for you. And I think we'll work with Kim to make sure we get that done. Any thoughtful way, and a manner that, hopefully, as John said, if it dried up, no pun intended, the water, that would be okay with us. But, we'll do that in a very thoughtful way.
Yes, all right, all right. Thank you.
Great.
All right, moving on, any other communications?
No, no, that was enough.
That was enough? One day. Student communications, I do not see Emma here, but Carlos?
Just to consider is that Emma will be graduating this year, so we need to sort of like remind her, or even the principal, Swanson, that we need a replacement. We have less than five meetings to go, so...
Yes.
Thank you for that reminder.
Any other communications? All right, great. All right, unfinished business, item number six, 6.12 here, an update on the administration's proposal preliminary, proposed preliminary operating budget for fiscal year '21.
Yep, we can do that real quick, I'll start, and John, you can jump when you want to. Just to kind of bring you up to speed, we've made a slight revision to the proposed FY '21 budget that we presented at 615. Mr. Ferris has revised the budget after review of the revolving funds account, and by utilizing the fund, the revised proposed budget has been reduced by 128,000, I'm sorry, 123,828. That, and that means that the total increase with Tier One that we presented before is now 3,343,250, for a total budget of 57,539,249, or 5.93 percent. So we've reduced it just by looking at the revolving funds from 6.15 down to 5.93. And you have that.
Is that an item 6.1 attachment, or...
It's the revolving accounts.
The revolving accounts.
Can we see the detail on that?
The, sure, yeah, it's on one of those, it's on the second sheet. You'll, if you look, you have, if you're online, there's a budget sheet that shows the reductions on the multi-colored budget sheet. Then there's a pivot table here that shows a food service administrative offset of $38,296.
Tell them what item to look at, item, in the top left, it'll tell you, right there, see, it says item, I just can't read it.
Item 6.1.
So in that document, 6.1, if you scroll through, you'll find...
It's like page two of, 6.1?
Will it go up here or no?
Do you want to display it?
Can we display it up there?
Oh, I can't, I have to go out of the...
Oh, no, okay, okay.
I can't get out of that. You want the, you want the...
Is it in your packet? Sorry, you were...
Is the committee able to find it, okay?
Yeah, we have, I'm sorry, we have.
Okay, so it's 6.1, so you see the multi-colored budget sheet, so you can see, you know, which categories and accounts they go into. Following that, so, and that totals 123,828. Following that, you see a pivot table, and so the change is a food service administrative offset, so, you know, looking at the food service and the amount of activity that we do in the business office for them. I mean, we handle almost 22 percent of their, they have about 22 percent of all the invoices that we process. So I was able to increase that amount by, and these are increases by $38,296. You know, simultaneously, at the same point, looking at that, I mean, it's very important when we take these allocations, especially out of these grant, where food service is funded by the federal government as well, in terms of federal reimbursements, it's very important that you show consistency in the method in which you would take an allocation to offset your regular budget with. Okay, if you don't, then you end up getting in trouble. So similar to that, I mean, we had started with Kids in Action, and, you know, I had administrative offsets for them, and when I looked at the volume of their invoices relative to the volume of the food service invoices, I felt I had to reduce that some. So, you know, reduce that by $6,100. And then, you know, also in this budget, so food services is, in the past, we've had some small increases to their offsets, but, you know, this year, we're bumping up the offsets even more. So you see an increase of 1638 for utility, heat and electric, right, but that's just a small piece, because the total's like around $26,000 that were hitting them, and that was based on, you know, power usage per square footage for sort of the cafeteria and so. Okay, so, you know, and that's justifiable, and we sort of did do similar things here for Kids in Action. So that increased another $1,600. And then, in the pre-K revolving account, you know, looking at that balance, that was, that balance is, well, two things with that balance. One is that we may need some of that balance to cover for any deficits that may create, be created this year, which unfortunately, I wish I had a better handle on at this point, but I don't. But I know that we've had those significant increases in tuitions in this budget year, so I think I need to be careful in that. But when we looked at the budget, and in this budget proposal with 6.15, we had that expansion of the pre-K program. Okay, you know, the .5 teacher and the .5 para and stuff, and also a .5 east teacher, which was in special ed. And, you know, so the combination of those were about $89,000, and I thought that, you know, to, and as we know, the pre-K program needs a lot of works to make sure that we have enough typical kids in it, okay? So we may have to do something different with tuitions to perhaps reduce the tuition, or sort of like be, you know, providing more lottery slots to get, you know, typical kids in that program. So, but anyways, I think that safely, we could add $90,000 to that, and we could say, hey, that $90,000 from pre-K can at least fund that teacher, that half .5 teacher, and that para, and the east school, you know, for the next year. Now, as you know, the offset that I use in pre-K is often 220 to, I mean, next year, I'm proposing 330, I think, yeah, 320,000, you know, with the 90,000. You know, where the tuitions collected are only 60,000, so none of this can go for a very long time unless it turns out that we don't need the pre-K funding, and we're not using it come the end of the year. So the combination of those items really is 123,828. You know, looking at some of the, you also have in your package sort of a revolving fund usage. And, you know, so I trended these over five years, showed you where the, where we were, how we spent, making a guesstimate for the total receipts for '20, but the planned use for '20 is the budgeted amount. And, you know, in some respects, there may be, you know, we may end up having some other expenses, especially in food service, that we have to, we have to add an administrative person, we may have to build some space for them, okay? And then, I also said, here's projected receipts for FY '21, and then what the budget in FY '21 has for the expense in it now, too. So we sort of like trend out where we think these might end June of '21, so, you know, still a year and a half away. And, you know, so with this, you see that the end balances, with athletics at 369, typically, we would have a balance so that we can cover the next year's, the next year's budget offset, so we know with surety what we'll have. You know, this year's budget has $358,000 offset for athletics. The building fees, that end balance for June '21 is projected at 231,289. As you all know, we have presented $2.2 million worth of capital, okay, and I don't expect that we'll get that, but we really have some desperate need for projects. And I think that building revolving is going to be one of the answers to getting some additional projects we need done, when we finally find out what our capital number will be. Same with, you know, with the field use fees, you know, the, we do have, you know, a new pump house building. I'm not expecting that we're going to get that, and I think that we'll have to replace that. Some of those offsets for 2021, I'm anticipating that we're going to have some capital expenses that we'll be using money for. Preschool tuitions, projected balance after using 320 for next year, and assuming a $60,000 fee that would increase, would be left at 325, which would set us up for being able to use another $300,000 or up to $300,000 for the 2021 budget, and then it would dry out. Okay? Driver's ed, you know, when you look at the driver's ed, so driver's ed is here, you know, you see that they've actually declined the planned use and the guesstimated receipts. If you look at '19, you see that they actually, they took in 109, but they spent 127. So driver's ed is actually, you know, sinking a little bit at this point, even though we've had more students in it. So, and they, that trend would be stabilized, but we did have a corpus there, so I think that, you know, I'm projecting by the end of June '21 that we have about $36,000 if that trend doesn't reverse itself. Kids in Action, Kids in Action was another one where, Kids in Action is enrollment-dependent, very much so, enrollment-dependent, okay? We have to have that volume of kids. We've run out of space. This year, we, you know, we only have one space, and we're sort of finagling that space. So we don't know what the continuing enrollment is going to be. And then also, a couple of years ago, a few years ago, when Kids in Action got that established balance, I mean, we're offsetting about, I've reduced it by 6,000 this year, but we're offsetting $170,000 a year in the operating budget with Kids in Action. Okay, so we have a couple of years here remaining, and hopefully, we can have the, you know, have that 170-plus, we also pay insurance for the Kids in Action people. Have that sort of break even, because if we have a break even, then I think the corpus will give us, the corpus that we have here, this balance of 561, will give us enough coverage to say, okay, you know, we can maintain this for a couple of years. We don't have to all of a sudden go and say, hey, you know, we're going to need another $200,000 because we can't subsidize Kids in Action anymore. And then similarly with school lunch, school lunch had been increasing, school lunch has got a couple of things going on this year. We're going to enter a CBA agreement, they are the lowest paid bargaining unit, minimum wage is increasing by 75 cents per hour. So, you know, we don't, we, I think we have to assume that, you know, that's going to be more than a modest, or a minimal increase in food service. So I think that we have to, you know, watch those operations, and then, of course, if we don't make any profit in monitoring more, that would also shrink down as well, so. So, so anyways, so, these are lost books and other tuitions, you know, we're using funds for those, those sort of like ebb and flow, well, the... You know, we're using funds for those, those sort of like ebb and flow, well, the lost books is the computers in the lost books, when we have big repairs, Joe will take that money and use some of that money. The other tuitions really is funding that came, comes from the child development course, Family Consumer Science Child Development Course. So, you know, that money there can be, it, it, it does two things, it pays for the para that provides service in that class, and, you know, if you see, last year it actually didn't, and I think that was just an accounting thing, it just never got booked correctly, but it should have got booked. But they'll be taking their supplies and, and equipment, you know, out of that. For example, if in the playground that's out there, that they need that new equipment, we're not doing the new equipment this year, but seventy-five hundred dollars, I think we'd end up using this type of funding to, you know, provide those types of services. And it's not, it's not, so twenty-five thousand and twenty-three thousand isn't so significant that, you know, if you took a couple extra thousand dollars, it's not really going to matter, you know? So, that's sort of a, a review of the revolving accounts, and, you know, where they, where they are today, where I anticipate them to be, and what type of issues are actually impacting their, their potential balance in the future. But of course, once again, as I always say, you know, forecasting is very humbling, I don't know. I don't know. But, but what I do know is it's not going to be, you know, they're not going to soar. Okay, you know, expenses could come in a little higher, they could come in a little lower. But we certainly have, like, you know, with the building account, building revolving and field revolving, I think those two accounts are going to be very important for our capital for next year.
Yes.
And we may need some this year, you know, especially in light of the traces program, which, you know, is, is going, and that was the, you know, extra lease and plus getting the room set up and having the movers and stuff, so, you know, that's, you know, by all said and done, that's a thirty thousand dollar endeavor for the rest of this year, you know, unbudgeted. So, the, I mean, I could go on and on about a number of things that could potentially happen, but I won't.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the committee? You want to start, Lys?
All right. So, John, thank you for relooking at the revolving accounts, I was doing the same exercise today. And one thing that I was thinking of was using the revolving accounts for one-time costs as opposed to, I appreciate you using the pre-K tuition account to cover those pre-K teachers. However, that's an ongoing expense, and I, you know, when I was looking at the budget and thinking, you know, what if we don't get all the money? We're going to have to, don't want to think about that, but you have to. You know, special education is, in the past, had been like that, set that aside, we know we have to do that, exempt that. So I kind of, I looked at those preschool teachers as, we have to do this, we don't have a choice. So the one-time cost things that I looked at, which come up to a similar amount, you know, potentially the PR contract, maybe do we, if we need that, do we dip into a revolving account for that? Even the, the STAR three sixty PD was listed as a one-time expense, and then I didn't know if the, is the assessment tool for STAR three sixty, is that one time?
It'd be a lower cost point, but it'd be an annual fee.
Okay. So, so I didn't, you know, maybe if we can relook at the budget, if there are one-time costs that we have, that we could address with the revolving accounts as opposed to...
Yeah, I know, I know what you're thinking, I mean, and I sort of thought about that same thing myself, and then, then what, what I came up with was, okay, so the, the pre-K account, this is pre-K money, you know, if it's used towards that pre-K program, we get the position in the first year, and then next year the money dries up and it'll just have to be in the operating budget. So then the town will have to pick it up.
Yeah, I mean.
But, but it's important for us, so we could do that, you know?
Or vice versa, because we get the students situated, we do pick up some tuition.
Yeah, hopefully.
I mean, I know it's not a lot, but, I mean, there is that opportunity, but...
I mean, I hope that's true, Lys, there, just like the, you know, with the state of the, the program, we don't have those typical kids that we really need for the program, so it's out of compliance.
Right.
And I think it's really important that, so, so, once again, I'm thinking supply and demand, right? It's like, how do I get more kids? It's like, boom, I drop my rates, but...
Yeah, no, no, I...
I'm just a numbers guy.
I, I get we have to juggle things around, so that was just, I, I would be okay with it, but I also feel like this is something we have to do. It's not, we don't have a choice, we have to cut something else in order to do this because we have to do it.
Right, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify for folks listening that when we say we have to do it, it's there's a compliance issue, just in case people haven't been following along at home all along, that we have a compliance issue in the pre-K, so it's not only the right thing to do, but it's also something we do have to do, we have to increase the neurotypical enrollment in the pre-K program.
And then, you know, looking at the other accounts, the building rental fees, the field use, preschool tuitions, Kids in Action, full-day kindergarten, we've been adjusting those rates, tuitions as we go along. Athletic fees, middle school activity account, driver's ed, we haven't been adjusting those. So I really think we need to, as a committee, we need to take a hard look at, you know, even if we dip into these revolving accounts more for this year's budget, that, then we increase those fees because it, it, we have to keep, I mean, driver's ed, that's crazy that we're allowing that to be a deficit, because that's a totally extra benefit that they're already below market rate for other driving schools, and...
I don't know, though, I thought we made the adjustment.
We made the adjustment last year. I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, that, we increased that by a hundred dollars this year.
We did do that?
Yeah.
I know we were talking about it, but I didn't know if we actually...
I think it's being charged at six fifty now.
Took that vote.
We were at five fifty, now they're charging six fifty.
Okay, so then, hopefully they'll, won't have a difference?
I mean, it may be, you know, similar to continuing ed, how we had to drop it, I mean, at some point it may be, you know, I mean, it may take up more time, administrative time than, you know, the value that it produces, especially since there are other, you know, driver's ed schools out there.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate you delving in further, I think maybe we could...
Any other ideas on the one-time, so, I mean, those are, you know, I, I think we can use some fundings for, you know, say, sort of like, with some of these revolving accounts, you usually want to use them towards the purpose that they, towards the, towards the type of fund that generated it, or towards the type of activity that generated it.
Athletics and activities.
Yep, right, right.
You know?
Yep.
We, it's, it's quite a bit there, so, and if it, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make the move of, if we're not getting the funding from the town, either we get, do a hardcore push on an override, or we're going to have to start cutting things, or we're going to have to start charging parents additional fees if we want to keep everything. And, but we also have to educate the students that need to be educated with special education and the math tutors and the, you know, tiered academic support, that has to be done. And unfortunately, we're going to have to look at the things that we're not obligated to necessarily do. People aren't going to like it, but we're at the point where either people aren't going to like their taxes going up, or people aren't going to like us eliminating things from the school budget. Nobody's going to be happy, so...
And the, the selectmen did, sorry, ask us to see what we could eliminate. We could come up with some possibilities. I'm not saying we would do it, but if you want us to eliminate something, driver's ed could be one of those things.
Well, but that's not even in our budget.
It's not, it's not really impacting the budget, so we wouldn't do anything.
That's like Kids in Action, it's a self-sustaining program.
I mean, you know, I, I think we could turn that, I think that, if I can just say, in stable grounds, I mean, I think we'll, you know, we'll be good, and, but I don't know what the results will be of this year, you know?
Yeah, I mean, now it's fine, it, I meant, like, if they kept going, then we were...
Yeah, I'm not saying that's going to be, you know, I mean, it could very well be at the fifty thousand, and you have to leave a corpus for one of those, you know, there's got to be something there, so, hey, if you sink a little, you know, you can make it up to next year, you know? So working capital, just like food service needs some working capital as well.
Right, well, to, sorry, do you mind, to Lys's point about the fee discussion, so I think that one of my thoughts was, at the end of this budget process, is to start really doing a comprehensive overview of the fees that we are charging, looking at benchmark communities, what they're charging for different fees, and figuring out, are there some that can be offset through the budget and, or through fees? Understanding, though, that, you know, parents as well are feed-up, right? They feel like they're paying a lot to help educate their students. So what I would think would be a great idea would be to establish maybe like a fee, an ad hoc fee committee, or even a task force, and maybe it's just some members of the school committee and other members of the community, maybe other town officials to sort of figure out what's the right mix, what's the right expectation of families in the town to help contribute towards some of these extras that we're providing, so that we are using the operating budget to fund what we have to fund and should be funding. So definitely something to look at next year's committee.
Yeah, I just have one quick one, on the ninety thousand for east, did you mention that the point-five STE for special education is included in that ninety thousand?
I did, yes, I did.
Is that okay? Like, is, because that's not a preschool teacher necessarily, or is it...
Well, it's, it's still in special ed, so I think, I think it's okay.
Okay.
Because what we'd really do, Carrie, is we'd take the extra ninety and would apply it towards a pre-K program, you know, you'd apply it towards a pre-K program. It's, it's generally directionally in that arena that you want it to be in.
Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions for John?
Just one more. When is the final date that you may hear from other staff, retirements, teachers and...
So March first is the date that we're supposed to know about the, it's not, so retirements can happen anytime, and so retirements and resignations, they will continue, I, I say continue, maybe they'll continue, you don't know if you're going to get any, but, you know, anytime, right? But the, the people that are on a full year leave of absence by March first, they have to notify us whether they intend to return. And, you know, there's not a lot of them that are out there, so that's not going to develop any significant amount of money.
Yes, so, just for leave of absence, I had this very same question for John last week, because I had thought, I for some reason had in my mind that retirements were, but you corrected me that they were...
Yeah, the retirements typically that happen before October, so you're going to, I think it's October, maybe June for the next year.
Right.
You know, I'd have to look at the contract for sure, because that's where the incentive is, by providing that notice so that we can get it into the budget.
Okay, thank you. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
All right, any other questions, comments for John? All right, do you have anything to add, you're good? All right, so, sorry. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments they want to make regarding the budget? All right. All right, so then I'm going to move on to item six point two, which is to continue the discussion of the proposed preliminary fiscal year twenty-one operating budget. And if we want to act tonight, if we want to act, we, there's, it's on the agenda to act as appropriate if we so desire, so do you want to, give us any thoughts on this, or...
Yeah, I, I think, you know, you can certainly take action if you want to vote on any budget, you could vote on the five-nine-three, you could do whatever you'd like to do with that. I will say that AdCom and the Board of Selectmen, I believe, are going to make the votes on the third and the fifth, respectively, and, and I think to get those thoughts and then to, to make that into your consideration before you take a final vote, I think would be appropriate, but that's up to you.
Okay, I would also point out that there is a forecast, a town forecast meeting on March first, second?
Second.
Second, March second, which is next Monday, correct? I will not, I'm very unfortunate, I will not be able to attend because I'm going to be in town, are you there? Okay, so that will also give us some new information on March first that we would have.
Second.
Or March second, sorry. So that could be, that'll be helpful to understand where the forecast lies at that point. Libby?
I have the superintendent at Linden Ponds on March second.
Yes, in the evening.
At seven.
I am back in time for that.
What time is the forecast meeting?
It's in the morning.
Oh, it's in the morning?
Yep, it's in the morning, it's like seven forty-five in the morning. It's just for the chair and vice chair to attend, so then we'll report back to everyone after, so sorry, everyone doesn't have to be at that meeting. Thoughts from the committee about, or more discussion about the budget, do, do others have any particular questions, issues, thoughts on it? Do we want to take a vote tonight? Do we want to wait and see what we hear from our colleagues in the Board of Selectmen and AdCom, and also what we get from the forecast meeting?
Well, and tomorrow night, there's an ACES meeting.
Yes.
Is someone going at six-thirty?
John and I are going to go.
Yes, so I was actually waiting to hear back from Dave Anderson on that, so I could not, I cannot attend, I'm sorry, I'm having a very hectic work week this week.
I can't go either.
All right, so it, does anyone, you cannot go? You could potentially go? George, I'm sorry, seven-thirty, is it?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay, six-thirty. Do you, can you, do you think you can go?
I could probably go, yeah.
Okay, in the event Carrie is unable to go, Ed, Lys, Libby, could one of you go?
Yeah, could, we could both, all go, or...
You can all go.
Anybody can go, yeah.
Yes, anyone can go. Okay, all right, so six-thirty tomorrow in your normal conference room? South? Awesome, thank you. Thank you for that reminder.
Because that will give us some indication, I mean, we don't have a meeting between all of these meetings, so...
Right.
You know, well, I guess, we'll kind of be at their mercy to, of what we can get, but, you know.
I know it is tough because there's still sort of information flowing around that we're not going to know until after this meeting is over, and then we don't have another one until...
The ninth.
The ninth of March. Yeah, okay, all right, so are folks...
It makes sense to...
To wait?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Mary, come on up.
Good evening, Mary Power, One King Philip Path, a member of the Board of Selectmen. I know this budget time is tough, I know we all hear from our various constituents that they want more services and we're not always able to do it. We're constantly asked for greater police presence, particularly around school areas, we're asked for crosswalks and sidewalks, we're asked for greater police presence in the square. It, you know, I know for all of us, it feels like oftentimes the list of things the community wants is, is so much greater than we have the capacity to provide. It's one of the most challenging aspects of our job. I would point out that this is, as you've stated, this is your committee's last meeting before the advisory committee votes on a budget recommendation. And as, as I've articulated in our public meeting and, and in conversations this year, we've had a tradition in Hingham where around this time when we all have a pretty good idea of the forecast, and this is actually about as clear as the forecast is at this time of year. You know, three or four years ago, we didn't have the certainty of insurance and other things, but that we have to make choices, and I think that what we all heard a few weeks ago from the town administrator, who's the chief financial officer of the town, is that our one point seven million dollar deficit is, is not unfortunately going to be able to be closed through any additional new news to the forecast. You know, we're, we're certainly all trying together to do that, but it's going to take choices. Next Tuesday, my board has to make some very difficult choices, and I would just say that it's, it's discouraging and saddening to me when the school committee doesn't take that action because this school committee used to do that. At this time of year, the school committee used to make votes and revise its budget because we'd all sort of come together. And it makes it very difficult for the Board of Selectmen to take things off the table when... Good evening, Mary Power. One King Philip path, a member of the Board of Selectmen. I know this budget time is tough. I know we all hear from our various constituents that they want more services and we're not always able to do it. We're constantly asked for greater police presence, particularly around school areas. We're asked for crosswalks and sidewalks. We're asked for greater police presence in the square. It, you know, I know for all of us, it feels like oftentimes the list of things the community wants is, is so much greater than we have the capacity to provide. It's one of the most challenging aspects of our job. I would point out that this is, as you've stated, this is your committee's last meeting before the advisory committee votes on a budget recommendation. And as, as I've articulated in our public meeting and, and in conversations this year, we've had a tradition in Hingham where around this time when we all have a pretty good idea of the forecast, and this is actually about as clear as the forecast is at this time of year. You know, three or four years ago, we didn't have the certainty of insurance and other things, but that we have to make choices. And I think that what we all heard a few weeks ago from the town administrator, who's the chief financial officer of the town, is that our one point seven million dollar deficit is, is not unfortunately going to be able to be closed through any additional new news to the forecast. You know, we're, we're certainly all trying together to do that, but it's going to take choices. Next Tuesday, my board has to make some very difficult choices. And I would just say that it's, it's discouraging and saddening to me when the school committee doesn't take that action because this school committee used to do that. At this time of year, the school committee used to make votes and revise its budget because we'd all sort of come together. And it makes it very difficult for the Board of Selectmen to take things off the table when they're not being taken off the table across the town. This is something that I asked a couple of weeks ago that the board consider. I wasn't intending on speaking tonight, I came to listen. But I do feel a responsibility as an elected official and one of your colleagues to say that if you didn't vote tonight on a budget, I guess, I, I'm just really disappointed that the committee's not thinking of voting tonight. I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have a question. Last year, we didn't vote on the budget until after we got a number, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. So.
Right.
And I don't know if you want to come back up, Mary, but that was, since I've been on the committee for the past few, the past, this is my third budget round, my recollection is that we had not voted on the budget.
It stopped about three or four years ago.
Right, okay.
And I will say that I, I think, I think that, that the collaborative relationship we've enjoyed over the years has, has kind of suffered a little bit as a result. I, I think that that's something, and for those of you that are maybe newer to the committee, it may be all you know, and certainly for Dr. Austin. Again, I, I come tonight knowing that we all have difficult choices to make. I, again, appreciate your taking the time to listen to me, but I would observe from, this is, I think, my fifteenth year in a row dealing with budgets and things, there's been a departure in the last couple of years that I don't, I don't think is necessarily good for the town. So again, thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. I think from the committee's perspective is that we, I mean, we have given the town what we need to fund the schools for next year, right? And that is unfortunately five point nine three percent. And understanding that that, that level of funding highly likely isn't available over the past few years, our thoughts had been to, to determine what number we're going to get and then make the really difficult decisions of having to go in and cut things out of the budget. And I understand to, that makes the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee's jobs more difficult because then they just have to determine what the number is going to be. I think the committee feels that, not feels, it is our job as school committee members to advocate on behalf of the schools. And we have gone through the budget multiple times and had workshops and met about particular items on the budget and tried to decide, is this something we really need this year? Dr. Austin's original budget had some items in it that he moved as out of priorities for this year and moved into priorities for future years. So I don't want it to, this to be mistaken for not wanting to be collaborative with our other appointed and elected officials. It's certainly not our intention. I think what our intention is to do what our job is, to advocate for our schools and our students and, and figure out what does the town have, they can provide to the schools, and then we can go back and dig into the budget and figure out what needs to be cut and what, or what needs to be shuffled around to next year, or what need, what kind of priorities need to be addressed. And, and like I said, so since I'd been on the committee, that was the way that it had been, that it had been working. So I wasn't aware of that. It was not the approach that had been done in the past. But other folks have been here longer than I, so I don't know if anyone wants to comment or.
That's how it's been since I've been on the committee.
So that's seven years.
Unfortunately.
So that's seven years.
Six.
Six.
But, yeah, I mean, I, Mary, I totally hear you. And I think, and then in past years, there's been shifting of the budgets until the very end. And at least my first couple of years, that's, that's how it all happened. And I think, you know, we are, we are now at a point where we do have to make some really hard decisions. And, and for me, those hard decisions will be of knowing how much we can get to then make the choice. Unless the administration can make some recommendations of, you know, what, what they would cut. I did go through the exercise today of looking at, okay, if I have to pare it down. But I, I, you know, it's my own thought, but I would defer to you guys of what you think is really critical. So it's challenging.
Carrie?
I can, I just say about this too, and I, I hear you too, Mary. I think it's, the everyone, everyone in town has some really hard choices to make with this. One thing I would say about the school budget, though, is we have to. Like, we don't necessarily have to provide, the town doesn't necessarily have to provide extra crossing guards, but we have to educate all of our kids as they come. And so that's part of the, the thing. We have gone through the budget. We have made some cuts along the way, too, and some of us wanted to give an even higher number to the town to these meetings. So I, I think we've, we've done, we've done our best and we will make those hard choices. But it's, a lot of it is just, you know, figuring out where all the, where the two other committees are too, where the advisory committee and with the Board of Selectmen are.
And the other thing too, that changed drastically is that we didn't have so many students who, you know, dealing with social emotional issue. It changed in the last ten years. So with that, I mean, we have to change the way we educate our children. For that reason, we are actually asking for additional, you know, staff, because we don't, obviously is understaffed. So that's pretty much what it is. But I've been here four years and that's how we have done. And it wasn't done just the year I started, it was before me.
I mean, it's certainly not meant to be, to be non collaborative, right? I mean, I think it's just the practicality of, we will, we will respectfully accept what the town decides that we, that can be allocated to the schools, and then we will go to do the work of figuring out what we can do with those funds that have been allocated to us. And I think that's the approach that we've been taking, I mean, at least since I've been here. And, and it seemed to be working well. I mean, then we, then we really come together and figure out what, what, what can we do to balance the budget that we've now been given. So, yes, Libby?
And I'd like to add that I think it's important for the, the community, for the people to see and to know exactly how much we are underfunding the schools. And it's not, not blaming the selectmen, it's, it's a community choice as to how much money we pay into the schools in the first place and into every, all of the other services that we require in the town. And I don't want to hide that amount. I don't want to pretend that it's less than it is, you know? We need to know the reality of the situation. And that's all that, you know, we're trying to do. And we, we have state mandates. It's not so much what the community wants, it's what's coming down from the state. This is what you have to have. And, and yes, the community wants it too, and so in order to have it all, we need more money.
Right. Okay. All right. Ness, go ahead.
And I understand all of that. It is something that is required. We're required to educate every single child that comes through. When we compare our numbers to other towns, we are seeing that we're lower than other towns as far as per pupil and the number of students in our classes. And I'm trying to reconcile how that happens. And so looking at some of the numbers, I'd like to understand when the town budgets certain numbers. We didn't use the full amount of the amounts raised last year, and we include, we take that extra amount and we put it into our general fund, and our general fund is increasing. So I would like to understand, well, can we actually use those funds? If we are being conservative in our budgets and our forecasting on the town side, which is appropriate, but if we think it's going to continue to happen so that our general fund is going to continue to increase, instead of not using those funds and increasing our general fund every year, let's just use that into the schools to help fund our, our schools. And I think the parents are already paying more than the other citizens. We're, we're paying for, you know, anytime we donate to H E F, anytime we donate to our P T Os, anytime at the, you know, H M S activity fees, we have increased music fees, we've got the drama fees. So I think the parents are already being taxed at an increased rate. And so I just want to be able to collectively come together and come up with some solutions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, come on up there.
I just want to give a little bit of context because that's an excellent question, and I just want to give a little bit of context. So, you know, the way our revenue forecast is done each year, we typically know how much we're going to collect in taxes every year. And then we have about ten percent of our revenue comes from things like local receipts. And we forecast that based on things like motor vehicle excise tax and how much money we're going to get in building permit fees and, and things of that nature. And, you know, similar to, I think, some of the revolving funds that John spoke about, the trick is to find the balance. The trick is to make sure that we don't underforecast our revenue, because if, if it does, if we overforecast our revenue, pardon me, we, there's nowhere to make that up. At the end of the year, I'd just say that, you know, at the end of the year, we are about a hundred and eight million dollar budget. And at the end of the year, it's not unusual to have, you know, departments with surplus. And our surplus actually usually, it's about one percent every year, which means we've got forecast accuracy of ninety-nine percent, which I think is pretty good for all of us. And by statute, that money goes into the general fund because town meeting said, you know, you can spend this money for all your stuff, and if it costs less to do all this stuff, you have to give it back to us. The advisory committee has a financial policy. That's a financial policy that's based on our benchmark communities, industry best practices. And we also talk to the rating agencies, because ten years ago, our fund balance was at such a low level that we were put on credit watch. Three months before, we wanted to borrow to build the, to borrow the money for East School. So we didn't want to get our credit downgraded. We wanted to make sure we could get financing. So we've been paying attention to that financial policy that the advisory committee reviews every three years to see where it is. An aspect of that financial policy, and again, it's kind of similar to the revolving fund conversation you were having, is we don't want to spend, we don't necessarily want to take any excess fund balance in one year and use it to fund things that are going to go on into perpetuity. You know, we, we don't want to hire five teachers and five police officers and then find in two years that we can't, we don't have the revenue to support it. So as we, as we look at that, we have metrics for, for our fund balance. I'd say one other thing, and that is that there is, there was an accounting change that was made recently. There's one line in our local receipts called investment income. We don't invest money. We're not arbitrage in the town of Hingham. We put, we put the money in pretty low risk stuff because we're not supposed to be arbitragers, and we don't want to be. But there's been an accounting change that has to do with some bond premiums. And without going into detail, the amount of money that will be earning investment income is decreasing year over year. We have to be careful we don't forecast that. So we, we're, we're looking at this very carefully. We are trying to make sure that every revenue dollar, you know, just like with your revolving funds, right? We're all trying to make sure that the revenue that's coming in is being put right back to work by the people who pay for it. We don't want that money sitting in accounts. And, you know, so, so that's what we do. But a, a very important guidepost, and I direct you to the advisory committee's financial policy, because that has some specific guidelines about what do we do with our excess fund balance. You know, our thought that the board's been talking about is with all these big capital projects, you know, foster schools in front of us, wouldn't it be great to say to the community, the school's going to cost X dollars, we've got excess fund balance of six million dollars, we're going to defray the tax impact on folks. You know, we're, we're looking at using that excess fund balance for kind of those big projects, because they're one-time events, they're going to be big events that hit people's wallets. And we, again, just, we don't want to count on revenue in a people-intensive business without knowing that we can pay those bills for a couple of years.
I agree. Thanks very much. Yeah, thank you. Yes, Ness?
And I hear that, and I appreciate that. I, I'm just wondering if over time, we are being conservative in the budgeting process, and so the general fund has been increasing over time, and the, the town policy is that it should stay between sixteen and twenty percent. And then at the end of last year, it was at thirty percent. Two point eight million dollar increase to the general fund, unrestricted general fund was increased by two point eight million dollars. That got us to thirty percent. So instead of, can we look at our forecasting process to ensure that we are really forecasting adequately so that if we could use that two point eight million dollars or one point eight million, whatever it is, and start using it in the operations on a continual basis, if we expect that we're going to continue to get that surplus every year?
Okay. That's fair. Dr. Austin?
I appreciate all of the, I think, conversation tonight. And building the first budget in Hingham is an experience. And, and I recognize how much hard work goes into it. I want to be clear on a couple of things. One is I didn't build a budget based upon what our per pupil spending is compared to nineteen other towns that I've generally never been to. So that's not what that's about. We built a budget based upon the real needs of our students. And in the end, and I'm used to a system, and I'll say this to you, I'm used to a system where the school, well, whether it's town council, select board, or whatever, in the end tells us, this is what we can afford, and I'll go back and I'll do whatever I can, and the magic we do in this office to try to figure out how we're going to use that effectively. I just want to be clear about a couple of things. One, before we started this year, so we remind ourselves where we are, this is an odd year, because one, we had far greater expenses in special ed than we expected. So we had, I think, a six hundred thousand dollar increase basically in special ed that we didn't expect. And those are hard, because we're trying a year in advance, trying to figure out what the special ed needs are, and then you go to a budget, you vote it, then things change. That adds almost, well, that's a percent right there in the budget before we get, get started. And then there were some other expenses that's a negotiation here. We have to prepare for that, which we've done. So before we started, we're almost at four and a half percent increase over a status quo. So we're not even talking about difficult decisions of what is to come. It's, if you don't have that, then we're going to talk about what we're going to cut out of the current budget to try to make that up. And so that's, that's part of the, I think, the difficulty of where we are this year, because we started at a number generally much higher than what you're used to. And so, yes, there's one point, you know, four, whatever percent now above that in new initiative things. And I want to be clear, so the choice really will come down to, do we service, because the majority of that money is in intervention services to students that are really truly struggling in the classroom to make any kind of progress in, particularly in the areas of math. That's the choices we're going to have to make. We'll make those. I mean, I think this, whether or not we go with a contracted PR person, you know, if that's what goes in the end, that's what goes. I can live without that. That's an easier sell for me, if that's what has to come down to it. But what's harder for me is we have to make those really tough choices of, do we service students who are really not progressing to the degree that we think they should or not? Do we continue to try to serve them to the best of our ability? And so that's where we'll be. But in the end, I'll develop any budget, I think you had asked, do you want us to come back? I'll come back with any budget you'd like me to. And we can do that, and it's, it's not that difficult, to be honest. We can sit for a couple of hours and say, okay, we'll get the administrators together and we'll sit and say, what's our number one? And I've, and I've got a pretty good idea what that is. But it's hard to do that without figuring out exactly where we're at first and saying, tell me what number people want, and we'll go make that happen. But I want to be clear on the, the way that I developed a budget was not about per pupil spending. That, that is a stat that is out there, and there's lots of ins and outs to that. It can help us understand some things, but that's not what we should be measuring ourselves. We should measure about what our data tells us about our student performance, which is our number one goal, is to improve student performance. And the things that I put in this budget are about improving student performance across the board. So I just wanted to, to say that before we went on.
And it's probably fair to say too, right, Dr. Austin, that if we are sort of faced with the realization of we will be cutting, like, the, the place to go is non-academic services and supports. Our number one priority. Our number one priority is the academic achievement
Absolutely.
of our 4,400 students. Period. Hard stop, right there. And so your, this administrative team that you've assembled is dedicated to that end goal. We have academic differences in, we have achievement gaps in this community with kids of color, with kids with disabilities, with kids who are high needs. It's 2020, but the resources and supports that we have in this community, that is unconscionable to this team. So we have, over the last number of years, and this year, really refocused our, reoriented ourselves on understanding our data, understanding what that data is telling us, and making, you put us in these positions, right, to lead a district of 40, of your future, of 4,400 children of this community. And our number one priority is their academic achievement. So just so everybody's clear, including those listening at home, when the time comes for us to, to talk about what has to go in order to fund mathematics intervention for kids in elementary and middle school, I mean, we're not talking about high-end, we're literally saying, we don't have intervention in mathematics and reading in grades K through eight.
In Hingham.
Period. Right? And so when we look at the challenges in special education, they are the only game in town. And until that changes, until we have the ability in regular ed to provide fluid, ongoing, targeted support to kids in areas of need, that's not going to stop. Right? So the investment in special ed is going to continue to grow because I've got, we've got nothing else to offer anybody but that. Right? So the reality is, I think, that the challenge would be, and I think we're, we're sort of all talking around it but not saying it, is if it does, when the time comes, that all has to take precedent over non-academic services and supports. And so if those are the decisions that we have to make, we will make those. They won't be popular, right? It's going to be a challenging time for all of us to, to navigate that. But that is what we're here for. I want to make no mistake that when, when, when push comes to shove, your leadership team, that's our number one goal, is to make sure every single student in our four walls finds success. And until that happens, we won't rest. So, I mean, the, the, the fair, in, in reality, I think, we, we need, we do need to have some sense, right, of what is available relative to our requests because frankly, our real request came in at about 12%, right? 11 and change. So like, when you said to us, what do you need, right, we responded. The reality was, well, that was never going to work. So then we sort of worked on telling or not back, which is what we have through a tier one, tier two, tier three, right? These different packages, even our intervention system has three tiers. Because we knew we couldn't get what we actually needed, so let's talk about what we need at a fundamental level, which is why we're only talking about math. We're not talking about literacy. We're not talking about the, the writing supports we wanted to put in place for kids. And so there's a lot more to all of it. So just as we have this conversation, if we do have to think critically, the academic achievement of all of our kids, right, that must be our first priority. And I think that's our, that, our leadership team would, would echo a similar sentiment.
Right. And I think, and that's what this 5.93% budget is addressing, those academic needs, right? The, the, of the 12% are all the other awesome things that we could be doing or that other districts are doing that we wish that we could be doing. But I do, to, to sort of echo what Paul and Jamie are saying, is that we have already made a lot of tough decisions and we have already done what we can. And we, we wish that we could say, hey, great news, everyone, we only need 3% this year. But unfortunately, that's just, that's just not the reality. I mean, 5.9, I mean, to Dr. Austin's point, 4.4% of this is just to open the doors as they look today in September of 2020. And the, the relatively small incremental 1.5% increase is to get things in the district that we have to have, the math interventions, the tiered support systems, the STAR 360. So I don't, I, I don't want it, I am sorry that the feeling, if there's a feeling out there that we're being unreasonable or that we're not doing our jobs or we're not being collaborative because we don't believe that that is what we're doing, we feel like we're being very collaborative. We will take what you give us and we will manage it appropriately, like the Hingham Public Schools have been doing for, what year did we establish the Hingham Public Schools? Whatever year that was. And, and we will continue to do that. So we do want to work collaboratively and we do want to, I mean, we have the utmost respect for our fellow elected officials and our fellow appointed officials in this town. So I don't want people to walk away thinking that that is not the case or that we're shirking our responsibilities. Our responsibility as school committee members is advocate on behalf of the students of this district. And that's what we're trying to do by establishing a budget of 5.93% and hoping that the town coffers will have enough to at least fund a significant portion of that if it becomes available.
We have been reminded many times that it is, it is not our job to come up with, you know, revenues, right? That we are not running the town, we are running the schools. But we have been, you know, working very hard to identify grants. And whenever we do identify grants on our own, we pass that on to, you know, leadership and you apply for them. And luckily, last year, we were able to get a couple, you know, some money. We have been talking about solar power in, in our schools, you know, if it's not on top of the building, perhaps on a walkway towards, in a high school, you know, and many people that use town meeting, you have to walk across the fields. Can you only imagine if they had a cover that, that is a solar generating power? Marshfield got a million dollars in revenue because they realized that, you know, things like that. So we sort of like kept thinking outside of the box. Totally. We all know that Kids in Action doesn't have its own house, right? It is very difficult for many parents to be taking kids from one school to the other. And we have to sort of like address that. And one thing that I said in the past, understanding that there is a waiting list, that there is difficulties, is that perhaps when we address foster, that we should consider finding a home for Kids in Action in one place. And that, if it, that is in one place, I guarantee that a lot of our parents actually will send the kids to our programs versus private kindergarten, pre-K. And that's a revenue, revenue source because it pays for itself, itself. So that's, I mean, we think, this body's thinking outside, outside of the box to try to help, you know, the town to bring in some new revenues. So I just hope that, you know, people also see that, that this is goals to show that we are working in collaboration with other bodies. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you. And again, I just, sorry, just going to make one more comment too. Because this is Dr. Austin's first year here in the district, and I certainly do not want anyone walking away thinking that Dr. Austin has gone rogue here and he's just throwing it out the wall to see what sticks. I mean, I think this budget process was incredibly thoughtful. You know, John's been doing this for a lot of years. And, you know, I think when Dr. Austin came in and met with his administrative team and Dr. Jamie and, and Dr. Viness, and people met, and the principals and the department heads all met, I think there was probably some angst in there, like, oh, boy, where are you going to start this thing all over again? We sort of have our way of doing things and we're going to, you know, now this is going to upset the apple cart. But I think they did an amazing job, the whole administrative team, on putting this budget together and building something that was very thoughtful. And I just, again, want folks to understand that Dr. Austin, you know, isn't just out here throwing it out. We, this is what we asked him to do, to, we, we hired Dr. Austin to come in, bring a new perspective, to look around, to find out what Dr. Viness's department needs, what Dr. Jamie's department needs, what the schools need to get our children, all of our children to be successful. And that's what he's done and that's what this budget was, attempts to fix and create for the town and the children of our town. So, thank you, all of you, for all your work on that. Greatly appreciated.
I think one thing I'd like to add is if, if there is frustration from the town side of how this process has been developing the past couple of years, that I think we really need to look at a new process then. Because a lot of these items that are now real critical needs, like the math tutors, we've been talking about them for several years, for three or four years. And we've, the education list grows and grows. And I know the town side has a lot of needs of its own. And, and I, I get frustrated that, you know, the, the budget has changed as it goes down to the final votes the past couple of years. And sometimes things come up that, oh, we're fine. People make the decision to move out of the reserve fund or they've discovered something that's of a benefit. Maybe this year with health insurance, it's not some, such a change. And we're all going to be in a tight situation. But if that's the way it's going to go going forward, and we're not going to have these swings at the end of the budget process, then we need a different process. But, you know, I know every year it gets more and more frustrating and it gets tighter and tighter for all sides, which is unfortunate.
We also thank the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen. We know that by not taking a vote tonight, we did not make your jobs easier, but we hope you can appreciate where we are coming from with that decision. So, and we really do sincerely appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the town and the schools. So, thank you. And thank you to the advisory committee as well. All right. So I don't see no more comments on that. Item 6.3 is the draft of the 2019 annual report. Thanks, Mary. This is in a draft form. There's a few paragraphs that I think need some revision. Dr. Austin, have you, and this is the annual report that goes into the town warrant booklet. Do you need me to take another look at this and add some?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've got it to the point now, in fact, I had said in your, your earlier communication to you, we had still a few paragraphs to do. We've done those. So I think it's ready for a, a final draft for you to review now as the chair, and then you determine when the end, and then you can turn that in as you see fit if you want to change anything. But I think it's ready to go in a final version. We've got no more changes, I don't think, Pam, right?
That's what I know of.
That we know of.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's ready for your final review and
This is a draft?
Just let us know and then we'll, we'll turn it in.
Okay.
You need to note that Carlos was elected to a second term. That's the only thing I found so far. I got through half of it, so.
All right. If, sorry, I'm just trying to think of, these, these always become tough things because I, I don't want to violate open meeting law by having people, having a lot, having everybody make suggestions, I mean, other than what is happening right here. So I don't know if people want to take five minutes to, that's, that's
What's the deadline to give feedback?
It needs to be by Friday.
And we were, and we were granted an extension upon request.
Yes, and we've already gotten one extension.
A few weeks ago.
Actually, last week, yeah.
Yes, so it was due last week. Do
I can't really read it.
No, I know, it's, nobody wants to sit at home and watch us read for five minutes. It's fascinating reading. You read it aloud.
Michelle, if they want to email me, they can email with me with any changes and I can, I can just fix it and then send it back to you.
Okay. Perfect. All right.
I think that would work.
We'll do it that way.
If I forget, it's just a lot of space there in between A and F. You can sort of eliminate some space there. All right?
Do that on purpose.
But, you know.
Is it going to be A period, F period?
No, the way it is, the period is fine. Just eliminate that space there.
Okay.
I feel far away from my, my two middle names.
All right, great. Okay, so
It's my spatial issue, Carl, so sorry.
Is there a deadline for
I was going to say, I might as well give them the data when you want it.
Yes. How about Wednesday to have it to Dr. Austin? So people have comments to Dr. Austin by Wednesday, and then I'll have it back to you Thursday night.
Perfect. And that way we'll get it done on Friday. That's fine.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Nothing like waiting till the last minute. Pamela, how about you, by 4:59 on Fri-
[laughing]
All right. Okay, thank you. 6.4, to hear an update on the Traces program.
Yes. I'd like to snap, like, first of all, is I'm thanking the entire school committee for all your support. I really feel it's, you know, really come a long way. I want to thank the leadership team of Dr. Austin, John Ferrison, Rick Swanson, for what they've done to make this facilitate to move along as fast as it has. And also with Doug Foley, Katie Hotman and their team, these guys have just done a tremendous amount of work. So to give you an update, approximately two weeks ago, all the machines at Traces, all the wiring was taken off so that they could be moved. And the Friday before vacation, all the equipment was moved to the new location, which is 293 Libby Parkway in Wayman. So that was done the Friday before vacation. Last week, all the machines were in the process of being rewired, and they were just completed today. I spoke to the electrician. Another thing that was installed was the, the new exhaust ventilation system for the machines. That was completed today. So I know that Doug Foley has been working with the building department. And tomorrow morning, we're looking to get the electrical inspection completed, and that will be the last thing for the occupancy permit. So if things fall into place tomorrow morning, we have everything set up to go tomorrow afternoon. If that is not feasible, then the latest it looks like will be going there is Wednesday morning.
Awesome.
That's very solid.
That's good news.
So it is good news. So we're really happy. And the guys who moved it, all the machines are in place, all of our classroom is in place, all of our benches and tools are mostly in place. So we've been bringing stuff over, you know, to get us ready, and we're looking forward to getting ready to go.
That's great. That's great. Thank you very much for the update and for your patience.
Can I just ask you a question? So is robotic going to remain at the high school this year?
Yes, they will. And they got a container there to help them with their equipment so it's not overburning the classrooms. So what we've done, their competition, I think, actually comes up within the next three or four weeks.
And it's over, right?
Yeah. So it didn't make a lot of sense for them to move at this point.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
No, just let us know when it's completed because I'd love to actually visit the location.
We'd love to have you there.
Thank you.
So thank you very much again. Thank you, Dr. Austin, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all your work on this.
I got a continuance, continuance on that. Just to, to add something in there, it's, it's still within the, the Traces piece because you had voted for Article T, for, or warrant Article T, which was to renovate Building 179. In the meantime, the town has located, from what I understand, which I think is the light plant, and they've done their estimates. And the town administrator has asked that the school committee consider withdrawing warrant Article T and that he will put in an article to renovate the light plant. Which, and I will say, it's not going to be, it's probably not going to be an easy renovation. I think it's a pretty substantial one. And we'll probably, they will probably have to be very creative on finance. I know that's one of the, the concerns, but I, I think they're willing to take that on. And then that's his request that we withdraw so that he can have them vote on a new article to renovate. I can't remember the name of the road, Ed, I know you'd have it. But, the light plant, that's all I'll say.
Cushing Street.
Cushing, there you go. So that's what I would ask you to discuss, whether or not you can withdraw that at this time and allow them to put their warrant in to renovate the other building.
Okay.
Would there be a, a lease involved, a dollar a year or something like that?
We didn't go that far. He just said he was doing that for our purpose. They would, and actually
My question is, for how long?
It's probably going to be for the, for the, at least immediate, he's thinking at least five years for us, and then having to take on another. If, if something else comes up for that use, then we'll have to figure out what to do at that time. But he's thinking at least an intermediate, you know, five years probably. That's a very large space. I have gone out there. Mr. Mayo and I went out a, a couple of weeks ago, or just prior to the, the break. It is a very large space. It's also being used by the Hingham Rowing Association. And so they would move, they would do some things with moving boats around and then looking at creating space within the building for the Traces program as well as looking at robotics. And when you do that, there's a substantial increase because then you have to do, you know, all kinds of different wiring and, and things. So that's the, that's the consideration. But, you know, he's, he's given me some assurance, that's what their plan is, and that has support.
Is it less than what our warrant article was or the same amount? Is it less than what our warrant article was, or the same amount, or?
No, I think it was.
The warrant article was a $500,000 feasibility study. In other words, can you do it where this is a build-out, which is going to be much-
This is a build-out, this is going to be in the million-plus range.
It wasn't a feasibility study.
No, it was just-
It was actually to ready the building. Just a small section of the building is going to get ready.
I'll move that.
That's a better deal.
I'll move that we withdraw.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What happens to Building 179?
We continue to use it as a warehouse the way it is, and we'll continue looking at it to see if there's ways we can improve it and improve its functionality. Well, and it stays on the five-year forecast. It stays on the five-year capital outlook to have sprinklings installed and to, you know, and to sort of ready the building.
Kick it further down the road.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you know, we've been doing a little research on it, so. I've been working on a project on that topic, and before I disappear into the setting sun, I'll give you all the report on 179.
And can I ask Paul a question? How do you feel about this?
You know, I think if you look at it, the amount of money that's going to take for 179 or Building 12, I think that was when someone was put aside by-
Come to the mic, Paul. Come to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, okay. I think that the money that it would take to renovate 179, or someone had talked about trying to renovate 12, is going to be substantially a lot more, in my view, because I believe that the light plant building is in much more of a modern building compared to these, which are probably back to-
Absolutely.
Do you feel like you would be more comfortable in the light plant?
I do.
Absolutely.
And there's so many things, like when we met with the fire marshal and the building inspectors, there's so many things that these buildings don't have as far as handicap accessibility, you know, openings, fire suppression, things like that. So they would need that, so I think it's a much better fit at the light plant, and I think that would work better for us as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Does someone want to make a-
I'll make a motion.
Motion? Are most people, are people good? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we withdraw warrant Article T for renovation of Building 179, with the understanding that the town administrator will submit a warrant article addressing the renovation of the light plant building.
I would say, I believe it's the light plant, and that's what we've been talking about. So I would just think about the light plant or any other building for which they believe is adequate for our program.
There you go.
Just in case.
Second, Carrie, thank you. Discussion, Ed?
I just wonder, because there are two light plant buildings. That you should identify this one as the former light plant building on Cushing Street.
That is the one, yes, that's the one I've been on, yep.
So we should identify that?
You can say the old light plant.
Yeah.
Located on Cushing Street.
Yeah, there you go, thank you, good point.
Any other questions, comments?
Just another comment is that, you know, Liza's doing a great job, by the way, at their town master plan. And they have sort of like included those buildings as well as part of the conversation. So who knows what's going to happen there in the future? So that's a good thing.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstained? All okay, great, thank you. Item 6.5, to discuss proposed new policy 6.5.1, administering medicines to children and to act as appropriate. Carrie, do you want to?
Sure, this is the second read of this policy. We've seen that before. The first part, administering medicines to students is something we're supposed to have under Massachusetts regulations. So we use the Massachusetts Association of School Committee template. The second part was put in at the request of the nurses. They wanted the ability to administer Narcan if needed in the buildings.
Anybody have, Libby?
I do. So the, trying to think what sentence this is. I think it's the third sentence in the first paragraph. It starts, "This provision only applies when..." I can't figure out what this provision is. What is that referring to?
Or is it the policy? Yeah, should it say this policy?
This provision only applies when the school nurse's medical administration plan.
It's acting under a specific written request of the parent or guardian. They need to have a plan in place before the nurse can administer medicine.
Okay, so does it have-
It's this.
Or is it the self-administration?
Right, is it the nurse can administer it, or the student can self-administer?
Or both?
Or both?
I think it's referring to the administration of the self-administration.
Yeah, it does.
So, Libby, it refers, so the sentence prior talks about, in the instances where kids, because kids get to a certain age where we want to build independence of their own ability to manage their own medication.
Sure.
So the sentence prior talks about the student being reminded to take their medication, but then it goes on to say this provision of the self-administration of the medication is only appropriate when there's like an action plan to teach the student how to monitor and regulate. Does that make sense?
Okay, but so could we just clarify, have the sentence clarify that? The provision of for self-administration?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I don't see why not. Like, so this provision relative to self-administration is only-
Only applies.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Okay, and then the second part of this, following consultation with the school nurse, "Students who fall into the following exceptions may self-administer medications." So are these, do these medications require the plan? I couldn't figure that out. You know, if I were reading this, I'd be like, okay, is that saying that they're accepted from needing a plan? They may self-administer, but then right above it, it says you have to have a plan. So I'm not following what, I'm not sure I understand what the exception is. This just doesn't, I'm having, it's confusing me. If everybody else understands it, okay, but I don't get it.
Well, I think this one that applies to that, the nurses do understand, they're the ones that wrote this, and they do fully understand what their credentials are in saying, these are the students that self-administer under these categories, and they're the ones that actually are the only ones that would implement this policy. And so I believe they do understand it.
I don't know, I mean, if... Like, does this, is this just saying they don't need a plan?
No, they don't need the nurse to give it to them.
Everyone needs a plan.
Everyone needs a plan, but these students are allowed to give it to themselves without the nurse.
These are all going to be law.
For self-administration. Following exceptions.
Because they're allowed to carry that around with them.
So I think it means that there are some medications that they need approval to self-administer. These medications, they do not need the nurse's approval to self-administer. They can just do it themselves.
And they don't need a plan?
No, they do.
No, they all have a plan.
That's the law.
Yeah.
The law requires this.
By nature of the impairment, they likely have, like all of our kids with cystic fibrosis have had before plans, that sort of outline the reasons and combinations that we'll make to ensure that we can access the environment. Whereas, what the upper, the top paragraph is talking about a student, for example, who might have a prescription for Ritalin or for some other sort of medication that sort of controls behavior or emotions, and that requires either nursing supervision to administer or the registered nurse who has worked with the student, how that medication administration will happen. What it then talks about are sort of a class of students whose impairment requires self-management, that the nurse doesn't necessarily have to supervise the administration or the student taking an inhaler, right, and taking a puff off their inhaler. The student knows their own lungs and has the ability to sort of self-regulate and self-manage.
All I'm trying to say is, this is not clear to me whether these people need a plan or not. If they're-
But what plan you've, like what plan do you mean?
And they're talking about the plan for above. Those don't require a specific, I don't think these require a specific plan. These are required by law to allow students to self-administer in these cases.
And they self-administer medications without a plan?
It doesn't require a plan.
Okay.
By law, a child with asthma has to be able to carry their inhaler.
Okay.
We can't do that, we can't stop that from happening.
Fine.
Child with insulin has to have.
We just add the words "without a plan"?
But it's really not without a plan. It's without nursing supervision to administer the medication.
Right.
The whole policy is about the administration of medication in school. So it begins by outlining the general provision, and then it says, generally speaking, right, kids really cannot self-administer unless there is a plan developed with the nurse, with the student, to sort of self-administer certain medications. This establishes a certain class of child who has cystic fibrosis, who has asthma, who has diabetes or life-threatening food allergies, who in the event of, for example, a nut exposure for a nut-allergic student, they don't need nursing supervision to administer noradrenaline into their thigh, right? They don't need to administer the EpiPen, they can do that independently. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
But there is, can I make a point that also this is directly from the regulations, and we did run it by the nurses as we were developing it at the meeting because we want to make sure that they're the ones who have to actually administer the policy and monitor, so.
So to your question-
But I mean, I'm just like, I-
Well, to your question, you're right.
Maybe it's obvious if you know what you're talking about.
One through four do not need a nursing medication administration plan to administer their own medication, that's true. Right, so to your question, that's right. These four classes of student don't need a nursing plan to self-administer.
Okay, so I don't think that that is clearly stated.
This one filed.
They probably have 504s in place that sort of outline-
The nurse requires everyone with medication to have a plan with her, with them. But the student has the medication on them so they can administer it themselves.
Right.
Yeah.
Any of our kids who have life-threatening food allergies, cystic fibrosis?
We have a plan.
There's a plan.
There is a, correct. There is a more formalized 504 plan since we sunsetted individual healthcare plans. So that's been an adjustment, so we used to have individual healthcare plans, and then they sunsetted them in lieu of eligibility under Section 504 for broader protection relative to civil rights. Yeah.
In reality, we do have plans on all of them.
Yeah.
The law does not, the law requires us to write that we don't, we can't stop them from doing their own if we don't have one. That's why that's there.
Self-administration, I just don't understand what the exception, okay, whatever. Who else is it? It's going to stick in my craw.
Sorry, what?
It's going to stick in my craw.
All right, well, does, do we want to vote on this now as a policy? Carrie, because it is the second read, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept policy 6.5.1, administering medicines to students
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
I'm not abstaining.
You certainly can abstain. No problem, all right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to new business, to receive a bid for a 2020 7D transportation van and act as recommended by the Director of Business and Support Services. Mr. Ferris?
Yeah, so the, we went out to bid for a 7D van, which was in the capital budget. The capital amount was $40,173, which was allocated. Only one bidder came in, which was from Quality Van Sales. I mean, typically, we, Quality Van Sales has bid our jobs in the past, as well as New England Wheels. But New England Wheels this year did not submit a time we bid. And I found out today that the gentleman that always bid in New England Wheels has since moved to National Van Sales. And actually, New England Wheels has stopped that section of their business, so that's the reason why they didn't submit a bid for this year, but probably will next year. The bid came in from Quality Van Sales at a price of $44,966, which is $4,700 roughly above, $4,793 above what we had budgeted. Quality sales, but Quality Sales does provide vans to other school systems. We called their references, they checked out really good. When we submitted the bid, we typically asked for a 2019 or a 2020 vehicle. Quality Van Sales bid a 2020 vehicle, and there was no other alternative bid. So, you know, with that, I think that I am recommending that we accept Quality Van's bid price of $44,966 and purchase the van from them. And what we would do is we'd use our budgeted capital of $40,173, and if we needed to supplement that, we would take it out of the building revolving account at year-end of an amount of $4,793.
Okay, thank you.
John, is this FY '20 or FY '21?
No, FY '20, this was FY '20 van.
This is FY '20?
Yes.
Is there any, are you, are we replacing a van?
Yes, this is part of the replacement van.
Are you going to keep the one, are you turning one in?
We probably will, we will sell one, most likely declare it surplus and then sell it.
Are you allowed to use the sale to offset that shortfall?
No.
No.
And the reason for that is because the taxpayers initially funded it, so any money that would come from the sale of that van afterwards should be returned to the general fund.
John, what is that final number again, 44 or what?
Yeah, so the bid amount would be for, I would recommend an award to Quality Van Sales for the bid price of $44,966 for a 2020 7D vehicle.
Thank you.
I'll move, I'll move that we authorize the business director to award the bid to Quality Van Sales at a price of $44,966 and use our budget capital amount of $40,173 and supplement the amount with building revolving account funds of $4,793 if necessary come year-end.
Thank you, second?
I'll say, ma'am.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstained? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, 7.2, to receive the notification of the overnight field trip of the HHS Quiz Bowl team to Crystal City, Virginia, and Washington DC on April 24th and April, through April 26th. Anyone have any questions on that? The form is in your packets, all right. 7.3 is to receive notification of the appointment of Michael Gorman on maintenance as a district custodian effective February 28th. So welcome and congrats to you, Michael Gorman. Item number eight, any 48-hour items? None, all right. Subcommittee and/or project reports, we will start at the end. Ness, do you have anything?
Since the last time we met, I went to the East PTO meeting with Dr. Austin on February 12, and we went to meet with them to discuss the school budget. Also attended the All-Town PTO meeting for the month of February.
That was awesome, thank you. Libby?
Okay, so, community outreach, we completed the fact sheet for foster school, and that will be added to the new website for people's consumption. And we had a coffee with the superintendent at the senior center on February 12, which was very good, it was interesting. And there were a number of seniors there that were interested, engaged, and spent a long time talking with Dr. Austin, and we ended up with the possibility of collaborating with the schools and the senior center to raise more revenues for the town. We have a coffee- And, um, we have a coffee scheduled with the superintendent at Linden Ponds on March 2nd at 7:00 PM. Um, and, um, we also need to meet for Fusion Academy, which is a potential school in Hingham that we're going to learn more about. And I just got this big fat book on. The South School Council's next meeting is February 26th, and the Hingham Education Foundation's next meeting is March 17th. Um, I'd like to remind people that, uh, there's a, um, matching donations uh, from, um, various anonymous donors to HEF in February. So it's not too late to donate now in February and have your donation matched. And if you don't already have April 3rd on your calendar, put it on there because that's their spring fundraiser at Paragon Boardwalk, and it will be a lot of fun.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Um, Libby, I mean, sorry, Liza?
Um, on the master plan committee, our meeting from February 12th was postponed. Um, that was supposed to be on facilities. Facilities discussion will now happen on March 18th. Um, and our next master plan meeting is on Wednesday, February 26th. And at that time, the consultants will be sharing a presentation about all of the results from the visi- visioning sessions and the online survey to inform us of discussions going on. And that's about all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Dr. Ed?
Well, I attended the, uh, PRS council since our last meeting, and the, uh, Pumiver family continues to enjoy their 50th anniversary year with, uh, with truthfully one activity after another. It's really kind of fun.
Carrie?
Okay, uh, the policy subcommittee is going to meet tomorrow at, um, 10:00 AM, and the MASC field director, Jim Hardy, is going to attend, and will start working on the policy manual, which is very exciting.
That is very exciting.
Um, it'll be a lengthy process, so we'll continue to update the committee as we go. Uh, the middle school council met today, um, and a couple of updates from that. The grade five teachers met at Hingham Middle School this week before vacation to get the latest information about what's happening there so they can bring it back to the students and families. Uh, and they also gave some helpful feedback, feedback to the middle school about move-up day and things that would be helpful for the kids, so that sounded like it was good. Um, they're planning a similar thing for, um, the grade five special education staff in March so they can see the middle school programs as they propose it. Um, as I was thinking about this after the meeting, it, if it might be possible to do that earlier in the year as, because the IEP meetings happen throughout the year, so it's something I think about so the staff knows what they're recommending as they go. The parent feedback survey ended just before break. Uh, the family participation was slightly over 10%. Uh, and then results will be shared, and, um, they'll use that data to make, um, plans and goals for next year. Um, and then the community member, Megan McCuster, she's also the young adult librarian at the Hingham Public Library, and she shared that the middle school art club, um, will be painting windows in the library next Wednesday, and there, I think it's the Hungry Caterpillar right now, but it's going to be the Mo Willems kind of characters, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
Uh, SNAP Pizza Palooza is going to be March 25th at Hingham High School. Um, registration is live now for the summer program at the South Shore Country Club, which, um, will go from July 6th to August 7th. Um, and it'll be in the afternoons on the days when the extended school year programs at Hingham Public Schools and other public schools are occurring. Uh, Sunset Point Buddy Week, um, it's Sunset, it's, uh, Sunset Point in Hull will be August 10th or 14th, and both will be on the website soon.
Great, thank you.
Carrie had a lot of things to, to mention.
I know.
Uh, but, but the Pizza Palooza is not only the 25th, but that's tomorrow night.
No, March.
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 Yeah.
All right, thank you, Carrie.
So, um, um, Hingham High School Council will be, will be meeting on, um, on the 4th of March. Um, long range planning hopes to meet, um, no later than, uh, April 6th, um, unless we need to meet before, John. So we'll be talking tonight because we are waiting for, um, the budget, you know, to be over. So we will have to go back and discuss the capital budget again. Uh, so hopefully, um, if not before, on April 6th, if that would work for the rest of the committee. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to remind folks that, um, Mr. Joy, the Neighborhood Tour, is a, um, a free play that we, at Arts Emerson puts on at different schools um, through a generous grant from Metco, and Hingham has been awarded the grant for this year. So the play, Mr. Joy, um, is a play that explores issues of race and class in America and helps people find their common humanity. So that will be March 12th, I believe it's at 7:00 PM at the high school, and it is open to the public, and it is a free performance. Um, so it's a one-person show, so it's a really great, it's about 85 minutes, no intermission, so folks will come out, um, to support that. Um, Special Ed Subcommittee, I need to schedule a meeting for us. Um, I was thinking of, right after we get our budget information, um, to sort of work through what we might do there. Um, so let me get calendar scales, send everyone an email, probably early, mid-March. That's good, okay. Um, and that is all I have. Does, uh, Cross, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, just, Pam, uh, could you please remind us of, uh, the next, uh, all-town PTOs who is supposed to be visiting? I know I scheduled myself for one of them, but I'm not sure which one, if you don't mind.
I don't have it in front of me.
Sure, no, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely not this Friday.
Okay.
You know, it's a couple weeks ahead.
Yes, and also, I'm glad you just reminded people about dates. Our next school committee meeting is March 9th at 7:00 PM. Um, but we are going to hold that meeting at Hingham High School in the conference room because the, um, winter, the, the spring sports.
Spring sports.
Still, silly word, winter. The spring sports night is that, um, that evening. Does it begin at 7:00 PM? And Dr. Austin is doing, um, a brief presentation to the students and parents. Um, so we were going to meet, attend the sports night, um, and then adjourn to the conference room in the high school main office for the rest of our meeting.
Hmm, good idea.
So it won't be televised, but it will, it is open to the public to attend. And that is it for regular business. Um, oh, I'm sorry.
John, is the capital budget determined with the Board of Selectmen on the 3rd and then the advisory committee on the 5th? When, when is the capital budget, um, distribution made public?
Well, George is, yeah, so like, whenever the advisory committee, when the advisory committee makes their final votes.
Final, is it?
Yeah. Selectmen may vote a capital budget. They may go through a capital thing, but really, when advisory, um, makes all of their votes for all their departments, they'll identify the capital appropriation at that point as well. So I'm not sure if that's happening on the 5th or if that's happening the week after. I mean, I'm hopeful I find out tomorrow, you know, when, when we go to the ACES meeting and find out, you know, what their schedule looks like and, because typically you do ACES, and they'll take their budget and talk to the advisory committee about it, you know, in one session. And then I think the next session, they come back and they vote. So I'm, I'm thinking that we're probably three weeks away. I think we're probably more about the second week in March, not, not, not next week.
Right.
Thank you.
But they would vote the capital budget with the rest of the budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think they're going to vote, I don't think they're voting March, um, I, I would think, um, or maybe, I don't know.
They do it all at the same time.
Is Aces going to go tomorrow and talk to the, uh, advisory committee about our budget?
Yes.
They are?
On the advisory committee agenda for tomorrow night, yeah, ACES will report.
Oh, okay. Okay, so then it might be the week after that.
First, it's on the calendar. I confirm that with the selectmen office today, but it's on the calendar.
So the advisory committee is voting?
Board of Selectmen, that Tuesday, the 30th and the 31st.
Okay, so then on the 5th, Ed, on the 5th, advisory will vote.
Yeah.
The budgets as well as the capital.
Budget as well as the capital.
That's correct.
I'm, I'm, great, okay.
Great, thank you. Um, someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of approval of minutes of the executive session of the school committee held on January 6th, 2020, discussing matters related to the current HEA Unit A collective bargaining contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and discussing matters related to the collective bargaining negotiations of the HEA Unit A for the 2020-2023 contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position and to act as appropriate.
I'll second.
All right, uh, we'll call.
Aye.
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 And I will abstain because I actually have to leave. So I will not attend the executive session, but we are adjourned from our regular session.
Thank you.